The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office (920-967-3608), contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website. Or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll, please?
Gladly, Mayor. Alderman Tom Grotty, Alderman Ted Grotty, Alderman Repella, Alderman Nichols, Alderman Eisnack, Alderman Sevigny, Alderman Hammond, all there present with the exception of Alderman Lewis who is excused.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is...
They're just either absent or...
Absent.
First item on the agenda is the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. We have the minutes and communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to receive Minutes A through F and Communications G, H, and I.
So a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
My name's William Malm. I live over on Carver Lane, just off of Seventh, by the tennis court. I've got two items. One's proactive, one's preventative. The proactive is, I would like everybody to think about May coming up. There's no mow May is for the birds. Some people thought it was in effect last year, and some of the neighborhoods looked like poor white trash. And by the time anybody would have been notified, it would have been two days if the notice would have gone out by postmark to Manassia, and it would have been probably 10 to 14 days if it went through Oshkosh and Milwaukee. By that time, May was over. Now, there was no get out there and mow your lawn because there is no mow May. And the preventive part of that is, I live on Carver Lane. We have my granddaughter's dog is there maybe two weeks a month. We've got it almost trained to put orange markers out there where she poops in our own yard. Anyways, my wife can get up in the morning. She's got two new hips. I got a cane. She'll go out and pick it up. And she's lots of times walking dogs. She'll pick up other people. But she'll get up in the morning, and we know there's two out there. There'll be seven. I smoke. I'm out there at 11 o'clock at night sometimes on the porch because people walk their dogs. They don't have no... They don't care. There's nobody taking a picture of them. There's nobody taking care of the ordinance, and they just walk away and nothing happens. This $1 to $5, I just found out, that's the fine. Should be $500 taxed on, put on their taxes. And to make it a little more incentive for other people, if you catch somebody, take $50 out of the city coffers and give them a reward. Maybe it'll make people think twice about letting their dog do anything they want, anywhere they want. And like I said, one is proactive, one is preventative. But I don't know if that mowing is mandatory. If it is, then somebody's going to come over there the first of June and mow my lawn. We've got four houses in a row, mid-'70, mid-'70, mid-'90, and mid-'80s. Two of them hire it out. They're, you know, and I keep doing it as long as I can. But if I can have to make my grass get 12 inches tall, somebody else is going to come over and mow it, the city is, and pick up all the doggy litter that's hidden in it. Because even the mailmen are still wearing rubber boots because of the cat influx over on Kinsey Lane that hasn't been taken care of in over 15 years. Feral cats, and nobody seems to enforce the other thing. But maybe if people see somebody driving by in a car with their phone up or these electronic doorbells and stuff that take pictures, if they get caught a couple times, let a couple of them get fined $500, it might be the sting they need. But that's really all I had to say. But like I said, I'm getting tired of, you know, walking out in the yard and finding seven piles when I know there was only one the night before. But you gentlemen and ladies have a very nice evening.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Sandra DeVill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I wanted to talk first about the Water Street project, the bids that came in. Obviously, they're very good bids because they're almost $1 million under what was budgeted. So my question is, first of all, what do we intend to do with that $1 million? According to the spread, to the budget spreadsheet, $960 was coming out of the general obligation debt. Is that then going back to offset that amount? Or part of it is coming out of TIP 10, $300,000; TIP 13, $285,000. Are we going to be putting this back in the coffers? However, recently, the council approved a $3 million expansion for the library. So is this money going to be diverted there? I'm just curious where the money's going. Because my other question was, were the bids that exceptional? Or was our budgeting off? Because that's a dollar on the tax levy. So that's kind of where my question's coming from. I was going to ask some more questions related to the actual bids, but no one else seemed to bring it up because, like one of them mobilization, the low bidder was $100,000 less than the other two bids. So I'm kind of curious if they understood that and also that alternate bid, and maybe someone can bring that up later. The other item I wanted to address tonight was the memorandum of understanding with Bird Scooters. I don't know if the council's aware, but according to the NINA news, the NINA council was made aware that Bird filed for bankruptcy. So I'm curious if the city is going to want to enter into a contract with a firm that not just this year, but the prior year, they also had financial difficulties where they closed up most of their operations overseas and then got funding through a corporation in Canada to tide them over. According to the article, by the end of 2021, they lost $430 million. Some of the claims, there's over 300 municipalities, including Nina, Manassia, and Appleton. So this is a company that approached us. We did not go out looking for them or soliciting proposals from them. So I would be leery about entering into an agreement with this firm. Furthermore, the memorandum of understanding that was in your packet didn't reflect, it still said 10 cents a mile. I believe last year, because of NINA, they upped it to 20 cents. It's not reflected in the contract. And if any negotiations were taking place, increase that more. Did we get paid for this last year, considering their bankruptcy situation? And the process by which complaints are made, Bird wants to get the complaints. They don't want the city to get the complaint. Well, to me, that's kind of like the wolf guarding the house. How do you really know? And I'm also curious if their software recognizes how many times they go through a stop sign or a red light. Because I constantly see that happening. So I would ask that you hold on this until you get some answers, either from Bird or from NINA, if they have decided to go forward. Because I see this more as a public nuisance than a benefit. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for the minutes to approve? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. We did receive revised minutes. Are these the same ones? Yep. Okay. Thank you. So at this time, I would like for us to make a motion to approve the common council minutes of 219-24.
Is there a second? So a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. The next item is the Board of Public Works' recommendations from 219. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like for us to approve the recommended award contract unit number 202401 for the Broad Street Storm Sewer Construction to Advanced Construction Incorporated for $92,764.
So there's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, 7-0.
Item three is the recommendation from the Special Board of Public Works this evening. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. We just had this meeting moments ago. It was recommended that we award contract unit number 2024-08, the Water Street Corridor Reconstruction to Yankee General Contractors Incorporated for $2,871,546.50.
Is there a second? So a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Do you have another question?
I have questions, yes. So Laura, I saw you were writing, I'd ask for unanimous consent to hear from Laura. There were some issues raised. Can you address some of those? And I actually, too, was really surprised and actually very happy that these bids came in the way they did because I thought it was going to be much, much, much higher also.
Yes, we did get, and I appreciate it for having the opportunity to speak, we did get very favorable bids, so that was a good thing for us. There's a few facets to this that we'll get into here. I'll explain some of the items that are being completed that are not reflected in this general bid, that are part of that total amount. And then I'm probably going to hand it over to Sam as far as monies and the way we've been kind of looking at it as we've progressed with this.
Yeah, because that was the second part I was going to ask because they were asked.
Yep. So we did this in 2023, complete sanitary sewer and water work. So there was some utility work that was included in the overall estimate that was already completed under a different contract. So you're not seeing that here. And then also, we are going to have some work done, I'll say, by others. So our city staff will be doing a lot of our landscaping. Our arborist is going to be doing some tree planting. So we're, and then I think there's some other avenues to that that our staff will be completing ourselves, and that'll save money in the overall, but those are not included in this bid. So while it is, yes, very low, and we're still under, despite those items, there are pieces to it that are being completed that are not in this specific bid. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Sam to add.
Yeah, certainly. Thank you. So as Laura had kind of said, again, this is not all-inclusive, and there's a lot of items that kind of fall outside of that scope. But in the overall picture, we are still under budget, but we did just get these bids back Wednesday afternoon. So again, it's crucial to continue to move on this contract, but I believe it will be our intent to kind of really take a dive into that, those fundings, the sources and uses, and then try to break down what our recommendation is of how we're going to move those dollars in and out. Because again, originally, this project was going to be all-in, about a $3 million project, and we had estimated closer to $4.5 million. So again, still looking at probably, based upon a quick spreadsheet that we pulled together last week, still probably being about a $4 million project with all the other items that were included, that were done last year, as well as still need to be done this year, and then hopefully landscaping into 2025.
And a lot of that is the utilities, correct? You're all shaking your head when people can't hear.
A lot of the previous dollars are utilities, or it would primarily be all utility and then some consultant engineering work, so far on that. One comment that was made was in regards to the alternate bid. So what we did with this project is there's railing required along the shore wall for that. So we looked at the railing similar to the Racine Street Bridge, the aluminum railing there. That's what we kind of settled on, not knowing what that cost was going to come in at. We decided to put an alternate bid together for the cable railing, which is similar to the trestle trails. With the alternate bid, when I did the alternate bid, I asked for the cable railing, but I didn't ask them to deduct the aluminum railing. So typically, in that situation, you would, it's in the base bid, you would then say in your alternate, add this railing, but deduct this railing. I didn't do the deduct. So that's where the note at the bottom says to correct it for the intent that we were looking for. So that's what that does, to clarify that.
All right. Thank you. You've got something more, Laura, or?
It's on my brain now.
Okay. Happens. All righty. Thank you, Mayor. Oh, she remembers.
Yes, I do remember now. The reason we are also asking for this award to be expedited, and I know that we hadn't discussed that so much, but we need to have this fully complete, we're hoping by November, to be able to capture those grant dollars. So we want to get the ball rolling. We have, it's going to take a couple of weeks here to get contract documents pulled together. So knowing that there is time ordering materials for the contractor, we wanted to get this going as quickly as possible, save us on some time so that we can make sure that this is done to capture those grant dollars at the end of the contract.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Any other questions? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, 7-0.
Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve accounts payable and payroll for the term of February 16 through February 29, 2024, in the amount of $3,749,666.22.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries, 7-0.
Item two is the Water Street Corridor Project Acquisition and Easement. Do we have a motion? Alderman Grotty?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, this is a little lengthy here. Considering this property is a crucial gateway to the connection, the City of Manassia's downtown to the existing trestle trail loop, the lake trail system, and finding it the best interest, the City, to implement the Water Street Corridor project. So recommending to council the approval of the land acquisition of 262 Water Street, Parcel 3-00850-00, and the easement for the public use of 133 Water Street, Parcel 2-00165-01, and direct staff to execute the necessary documents and needs to complete this transaction.
Is there a second?
Second.
So a motion and a second. Discussion? Do you have anything else, Tom?
No.
Sorry. Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. My discussion would be, this would be coming back to the council then for final approval? Why? Is it... I'll let you answer. I mean, I guess I would ask, I'm not seeing any dollar amounts, or is it just the swap period? And... Yeah, there is no dollar amounts. When I talked to you last, I don't recall it being just that.
Correct. It would be an easement at $0 for the one property, and then a complete land swap of the two properties at no cost. We would just take on kind of the closing cost with that, but that can just be influx into standard budget.
So with this motion, then we are accepting that process, period. Okay? And it did go through planning.
Yep, it did. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Is the owner of the property that is water adjacent still maintaining ownership of that property?
So yes, so the property that is adjacent to the water on the west side of the railroad tracks, it is their intention to maintain the actual ownership. So they own several of the properties on the other side of the street, on Water Street. And so depending on how that develops, they wanted the opportunity to potentially use that shoreline for that new development in the future, whether that be potentially docking or just their private access to that waterway. But again, we would basically, per that easement, maintain our trail system through there, but it would still be on their maintenance to maintain that shore wall or the shoreline.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. So in other words, Sam, I may be not getting this. So we're going to maintain the whole shoreline except for that little area.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If we could have a roll call vote, then, please? So the one property, 133 Water Street, will still be privately owned, but they will allow us to have the trail go through that. We'll maintain the trail, but not the grass or anything else on that property. The rest of it we'll maintain because we own all the rest of it. So we will...
Why would we do that that way? I don't like it. I think we either maintain it or we don't.
Because we don't own it, and he doesn't want to sell it.
No.
Because he wants...
See, when I thought there was this land swap, I thought, oh, nice, he's going to do this.
Oh. That's, um, I can't turn your mic on. There you go. So the land swap is for the two residential parcels. There's one on either, do we have addresses on here, Sam?
On either side of 258 Water Street.
We're just going to swap them because the parcel that we own isn't where we need to have the road in the future. So we need that road and access into what's the R and R bar, and that allows us to do that and turn the road up on that area. So those two parcels, we're swapping, two residential lots. The other parcel, which is 133 Water Street, which is that long skinny parcel along the canal, we're just getting easement to put a trail on that parcel. The city at some point sold it to Custom Marine, and otherwise, we had owned that in the past as the city. I'm not sure how it happened.
Probably because they put their motors in there or something.
So that's how it became privately owned.
All right.
And the current owner does not want to sell it. As Director Schrader was talking, he's thinking it might be useful for docs or something in the future when he develops the property across the street that he also owns. So no one will know that except for us, most likely.
But could he at some point decide that, can a building be put on that lot? Could he decide, oh, well, I don't, I gave, I mean, although he's giving us an easement, can he still put a, decide to put something on there?
We'd have to look at the details of that, but I, the easement does call out that there can't be any obstructions to obstruct the trail access, pedestrian, public thoroughfare, and the utilities, any utilities that would be needed. So again, as your, as the trail goes through and you're getting closer to the water, I don't want to commit to it because I haven't reviewed it, but I would probably say no.
Probably not enough space there to put a building left over.
I don't know. Well, I mean, there are some, some of those properties over there that you could probably do that, and I was thinking kind of like the condos that we have downtown here already. And I know it was never part of the plan, but I envisioned that, you know, I didn't think we'd ever get this far, just the fact that we got that grant. But I envisioned that we would have condos along that edge, too. But...
And there was, when we had done the Water Street Corridor Plan in 2018, 2019, there was a lot of conversations about, do we completely vacate the road to actually push that development up to the trail section? And ultimately, the conversations that we had with the public at that time was, no, the road should stay, and the development would happen on the other side of the road. And that's how we've, based upon the visions and how we've been kind of moving forward with this process.
I mean, I'm not opposed or one way or the other. I just want us to look at it more long-term. Are we maybe making a mistake? So, well, anyways, I see some other lights on. I'll let them speak.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. My question relates to the land swap. So I understand that the, that the owner of the water adjacent property is allowing for an easement there. This memo also discusses a land swap between the two properties on either side of 258 Water Street. So I'm trying to figure out how that land swap is being addressed in this motion, or if it's addressed somewhere else that I've missed. Because wouldn't we need to make an official motion because we're changing ownership of properties there?
So yeah, the motion does say the acquisition of 262 Water Street to be in direct staff to execute the necessary documents to complete this transaction. So if you wanted to, I think an amendment clearly stating in the sale or transfer of Parcel 385-200, you could maybe add that amendment to be very clear about that.
Is that your amendment?
Yes, I just, I need to make sure. Can you state that again? I just feel like we need to address this swap of property more clearly.
So it's the approval of the land acquisition of 262 Water Street and an easement for public use of 133 Water Street. I'm leaving out the parcel numbers.
Mm-hmm.
And direct staff to execute the necessary documents needed to complete this transaction. So that's how it's currently worded.
Yep.
So what you're asking to do for clarification point is to add the amendment of approval of land acquisition of 262 Water Street, Parcel X, and an easement for public use of 133 Water Street, Parcel X, and the sale of Parcel 3-00852-00, and direct staff to execute the necessary documents needed to complete this transaction.
Yes, that is my amendment. Now, poor Valerie is stuck.
Are we just gonna start over, Valerie?
Well, we got, all we do is just add the transfer of...
And sale of, yeah. We'll just do a voice vote on that. Did you have a question about the amendment, Randy?
Yes, I guess I did.
Okay.
Sure, well, but...
That's not the amendment.
Nope, not at all. I don't have a question about the amendment. Sorry. Thank you.
So we want you to amend the motion to include the sale of Parcel... So we're acquiring 3-00850-00, and we're selling and the sale of, is it...
3-00852-00.
It's not in there anyplace, I don't think.
Oh, that's why.
So just put it, 852 versus 850. Okay, so right now we have a motion on the floor to amend to include the sale of parcel 300852-00. Do we have any questions on that? Seeing no questions, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? And I don't know if we got a, did we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Nichols, a second by Alder and Eisnack for the amendment. We'll let her catch up on the minutes. So now the motion would just read easement and sale of another parcel, correct?
Nope, stop, guys.
It is a point of clarification too. So we did start this process knowing we were up against a very tight budget. So again, this went to the planning commission last week, or two weeks ago, on the 20th, February 20th. And as we, as we progress in these conversations, if, if there's also direction that we want to be fee ownership of that, staff can certainly have those conversations. But this gets us to a point where we could accept the bids because we have complete control of what we need to do to construct a project. And I believe the, the conversations are going to be around not just selling that one portion of property. It's going to be the acquisition of everything. So just to throw that out there, again, we can certainly have those conversations.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor as amended. And we're taking a roll call vote then.
Motion carries seven, zero.
We're on action item number three. Director, go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is for Sam. Sam, I was just rethinking this and I know you met, we talked about the shore wall. So the city's going to, the city's going to fix up the entire shore wall on Water Street? Or is that person that owns that one lot that's giving us the easement, are they going to be responsible for the maintenance of that particular shore wall in front of that area?
So a few things there. We are not necessarily cleaning up or rebuilding the entire shore wall.
Okay.
So that's first. The shore wall on that property will maintain the, that property owners to maintain the vegetation, the rip line or the rip wrapped, the shoreline, that would still be maintained by the owner.
Okay. Will it look different? Will the city's portion of the shore wall look different than that owner's portion of the shore wall?
Not at this time.
Okay. Maybe then tomorrow.
So to be a little bit clearer, Randy, we're putting a new shore wall from, from the railroad bridge to Taco Street.
Correct.
That'll have all new shore wall. The shore wall from the railroad tracks down to the...
Merida?
Down to the lock.
To lock.
Will remain much the way it is right now. We're not putting a new shore wall in there. There might be some repair to it if need be, but it, it will be similar to what it is now, rock and...
Oh, okay. Why don't we just choose to do half of...
Because at that point, it's about at the waterline. There's not that big drop off there anymore.
Correct. Yep. Okay.
So, and that's what's there right now.
Okay.
So if that, that, does that help more or less?
Okay. All right. Understood.
So yeah, it should look fairly similar on that section.
Understood. Thank you very much.
It's a good question though, because if we had a big tall shore wall and then nothing and then a big tall shore wall, it would look weird.
Yeah.
It'll probably be like behind the house that we bought, more like that, correct?
Yes.
Up to the railroad track and then it'll be a shore wall situation.
Item three is the extension to the Bird agreement. Director Schrader, I don't know if you want to comment on this before we move forward?
I certainly can. Thank you, Mayor. So again, Bird Scooters has reached out and looking at basically an extension to the memorandum of understanding for the year of 2024. We have had basically this MOU or memorandum of understanding for the last two years. I would say this past year, the, the issues that we had the first year have greatly improved as well as the communication aspect and just understanding of how that works. It was brought up, I guess during public comments about the bankruptcy of Bird Scooters. So again, Bird Scooters had a large merger with another company. And at that time, right at when they acquired that, they, they did file for bankruptcy. So again, I'm, I would assume based upon how that transaction happened that that was planned to consolidate debt and to kind of move, move that company into being able to be very viable in the future. My understanding is that the city of Appleton, as well as the city of Nina, is moving forward on another year extension with them. I am not positive on where they are at in, in their process, but it will be in front of their boards and staff is recommending in all three parties that we continue to move forward. From our aspect, we, we certainly understand that at some point, these, these can be considered nuisance. But as we provided in kind of that overview of, of the use within the city of Manasha, it is being used. It is a form of micro-transportation as well as kind of just the ability for, for anybody to have access to, to quick transportation. So again, the reason they want the complaints directly to them is they believe that would be able to be handled quicker as well as be able to document all those complaints in one place so they can understand what they need to fix in the future.
And Sam doesn't want them. And you don't want to get them either, right?
If, if any of them are shared with me, I'm happy to work with Bird to get those accomplished. But, but certainly, again, I think, I think those reasonings do make sense.
I guess I didn't mean it that way. I meant it more as it's a lot more efficient for them to know about them, than for them to sit at your desk, you to handle them, spend a whole bunch of staff time with them, and then send them to Bird, which makes everyone happier when we can get any complaints cleared up more quickly.
Correct. And I would say, you know, this fall, I know one of our aldermen did have an issue with an outstanding bird out there. And certainly during that bankruptcy, they were going through staff transitions. I did have basically find kind of our new rep as well as our fleet manager. So the individual that's kind of takes care of birds here locally in Appleton, Nina, Manasha has not changed. And, you know, for instance, Fox Crossing emailed today. I got the email, said, hey, I haven't been able to get ahold of anybody at Bird. I sent them over that new, or I sent that new contact an email. They emailed me right back, said, hey, I'll get ahold of them. Called over to Fox Crossing and within an hour, she emailed me and said, hey, we got what we need. We appreciate it. I don't know what you did, but, but thank you. So again, that, it's kind of just getting that communication back in the line. So I feel confident if we were to decide to move forward with this. The last thing, from an attorney standpoint, this is not an agreement. It is just a memorandum of understanding that they are allowed to continue to use the facilities in the city of Manasha.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. There was the question of have we received payment?
Oh, sorry, I forgot to add about that. So we did receive payment up until, I think, about the time when they had filed for bankruptcy. So our debt would have likely rolled into that. I want to say the dollar amount, I can't speak off the top of my head, but it was a couple hundred dollars. So again, nothing that, that we would really try to overly spend a lot of time to reacquire.
Alderman Grady?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I think the public, Sandra DeBille asked a question. No, we only get reimbursed, it's 10 cents a ride. It's not 10 cents a mile. No, the memorandum is 10 cents, but we had, what, 5,000 rides last year? So we're making $500 on this. So it's not, it's not a city saver. And I understand why Bird would like to get all the complaints because they don't have to listen or explain it. But I ride around the city and I think last year was worse with scooters being laid all over the place and never picked up when they were supposed to pick them up that night or within a couple of days. So I wasn't really happy with keeping the sidewalks clear and keeping certain areas clear. And I just not really impressed with this. But if we were to say no, does that mean somebody from Appleton can't ride to Nina? Because we're, they can't get through Manasha, right? So that would wreck some of that stuff. So it's interesting. So I just want to state my points.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my decision kind of ways or whatever, it depends on Appleton and Nina. I'd like to make sure all three of us are in for sure, 100%. And I know that you've said you've had some conversations that you assume that Appleton and Nina are going to okay this one-year additional contract or memorandum. Is that 100% sure? Or is this, could this still be wishy-washy and we're the only ones that accept the Bird scooter? And just, I'm fine if we're all, all three are in together.
I was just going to add, I think that would be an unacceptable amendment contingent upon Appleton and Nina also executing memorandums of understandings. So brings up a good point, but we certainly, again, from our standpoint is, especially working with Nina and Appleton, we, we want to be a leader in this Fox Valley. And we have been one for 150 years. And so continuing to try and find ways to, to make sure we're moving as technology moves, I think, I think is crucial because these, while none of us might ride them or somebody might ride one once and get hurt. It is what it is. But, you know, I think there clearly are users out there that are using these. And, and I think that's what you guys have to do is weigh, weigh the positives versus the negatives.
Did you want to make that motion, Randy?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll make my motion, I guess. I'll make an amendment to that, to the Bird amendment to the memorandum of understanding between the city of Manasha and the Bird Riders that this be, our memorandum be accepted provided Appleton and Nina goes along with the Manasha vote, or goes along with the Manasha vote? I don't know if that's a very good one, but...
So, so it'd basically be the extension of the amendment, extension amendment to memorandum of understanding by and between the city of Manasha and Bird Riders and contingent upon Appleton and Nina also approving their memorandum of understanding.
Thank you, Mayor. That's why you're the mayor. Good job with the word contingent. Good job. Thank you.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second by Alderman Eisnack. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please? Oh, no, this is as amended.
Oh, he did?
He made the motion with the amendment in it.
Oh, he did?
Yeah. I'm sorry, I forgot that you had to do all that typing. There you go.
Motion carries six, one.
Okay, item N is public comments on any matter that was listed on the agenda.
Sandra DeBille Taylor, 545 Broad Street. I'm going to comment on three things. First, I'll start with the Bird scooter. So I appreciate the conversation that took place. In my opinion, first of all, I feel that if staff was aware of the financial situation Bird is in, it should have been communicated to the council. It was never in any of your packets. I don't know if it was in a phone call or an email, but that should have been made public. Secondly, if the communities of Appleton, Nina, Fox Crossing, and Manasha feel that this is an essential service, why aren't we requesting proposals from other firms and have it the best bang for our buck? There are other companies that do this. We're relying on the company that two years in a row has filed for bankruptcy. So that's kind of where I'm at. And I appreciate the amendment that Alderman Repella made contingent upon that these other communities are buying into this because this could have been tabled or held until we knew the answers. The other one was regarding the land acquisition, land swap. And I appreciate Alderman Nichols making an amendment to include the parcel number of the parcel that we are dealing with because it wasn't on the agenda. In fact, I was going to bring this up ahead of time, but I didn't. The parcel in question is currently assessed at $13,000. If this is that vital to this corridor, why don't we just make an offer to purchase it? Because down the road, tomorrow, the redevelopment authority is going into closed session to discuss, and it's very vague, Water Street property acquisition considerations. So I think staff should be kind of filling everybody in on what's the game plan because there's more to it than what meets the eye. And then lastly, I just wanted a question regarding the alternate bid for the railing for Water Street. It appears as that it was bid to have a similar railing to the Racine Street Bridge, the aluminum bridge. And the alternate was accepted for the cable. Is that what the council wanted? Or do you want an aluminum railing? I don't think that was ever asked. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
Becky, I missed you. I'm sorry. Was there something that...
I just had a question before we adjourn.
Oh, sure.
And that is, it's noted here that the March 18th meeting, common council meeting will begin at 5:30. Can anyone tell us why we're changing the time?
I'm not sure to tell you the truth.
Public hearing, yeah.
You want to put your mic on so you can...
So there, there's two proposed public hearings. So one would be at 5 o'clock and one would be at 5:30. Because there's two different, in your Board of Public Works packet, there, there's two different assessment areas. So it has to do with what's on the Board of Public Works agenda after this meeting for the next, the next council meeting on March 18th.
Okay.
So there's, it, would that be what it is, that the meetings change, but it's, it's public hearings for those two assessments?
And the folks who would be attending, who would receive notification will also be aware that of their public hearing time?
Yeah. What's in your Board of Public Works packet, those notifications or that, that letter and then the public hearing notification? That's what will be mailed to all of the parcels that are listed in them, the, the two spreadsheets.
So next, on March 18th, we'll actually be here at 5:00?
5:00, correct, because of the two different meetings.
Thank you. Thank you.
Or the two different public hearings, excuse me.
Thank you.
To say that's what we're taking up in the Board of Public Works coming up so that they can be notified.
And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you.
The city of Manasha is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manasha residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manashawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding city of Manasha issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.